Okay, with that, I will call the meeting to order. Uh, the first thing, David, if you could do a roll call, please. Everybody, uh, if you would unmute your phones while David's preparing to do a roll call.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Cohen. Not present. Uh, Commissioner Banton.
Present.
Commissioner Boas.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Conway.
Present.
Commissioner Peoples.
Present.
Commissioner Goodman.
Here.
Commissioner Vine.
Present.
Commissioner Young.
Present.
And Sheriff Stroud.
Present.
And you have a form.
Very good. With that, I want to thank everybody before you go on mute. Uh, a couple of things that you know we'll go through when we go through any questions or votes. I will simply walk down the, uh, the list so that I can be sure not to miss anyone as we just did. Uh, the first order of business is approval of the minutes from our April first, uh, meeting, which was done virtually. Uh, the minutes were sent out. I hope everybody received all their information. Minutes were sent out, uh, both electronically and by mail. So with that, I will accept a motion to approve it. Please state your name and any second.
No move, Commissioner Bradley. Second Vine.
It's been moved to second. It can, if we can have a vote to approve the minutes.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Conway.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman.
Aye.
Commissioner Vine.
Aye.
Commissioner Young.
Ab- abstained.
Sheriff Stroud.
Aye.
And motion passed.
With that, I will then ask everybody if you can go ahead and mute your phones at this time or your mics at this time. We have a couple of items on the agenda. Cecilia will talk, walk us through the first two. Then Roman will walk us through the third item. Uh, I will say as we're preparing for that, let me thank Don and his staff for being proficient and efficient in getting us up and going and making this work al- almost seamlessly. Thank you. Uh, so with that, Cecilia, it is on you to take us through the first item.
Thank you. Okay, so this first item is actually for a project that you all have seen in the recent past. Uh, we had a planned unit development that we looked at and went through sort of the initial phase to establish the PUD.
Alderman Cohen just joined.
Welcome. That, that particular item, uh, was approved for recommendation, uh, to the Board of Aldermen in February, uh, at the regular Planning Commission meeting. Additionally, uh, in September of two thousand and sixteen, the Planning Commission recommended approval of a redevelopment plan for chapter three five three. So this particular item is, uh, for a lighting study and redevelopment plan under the chapter ninety nine statute. And initially, you know, I think the, the major point on this is that the redevelopment plan for chapter ninety nine at this point is allowing for, uh, the sales tax abatement only. It is not allowing for any additional, uh, sort of years of tax, uh, tax abatement or anything like that. That will sit under the three five three. Um, and if you want to go to the next slide. Uh, this is sort of a redevelopment plan, just to, to refresh your minds on what the, what it is we're talking about. The PUD is, as we mentioned at that time, a multi-phase process. So we will go over the development, um, in stages before they are approved to go to construction. And at that time, you guys will have an opportunity to talk about the design, um, and the density and, um, sort of all of those aspects of it. But at this point, the request is to, um, approve, uh, review and approve the lighting study and redevelopment plan under chapter ninety nine with an understanding that it has already been lighted under the three five three statute of two thousand and sixteen. With that said, uh, staff has reviewed and recommends that the area be declared lighted under our SMO chapter ninety nine. And the proposed study, uh, and redevelopment plan is in conformity with Strategic Land Use Plan Opportunity Area Designation. And PDA staff recommends approval of, uh, recommends approval of the proposed lighting study and redevelopment, redevelopment plan resolution. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, which three fifty three is this?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Okay, I'll, let's walk through the questions to, to the commissioners. Uh, Alderman Boyd, any questions?
No questions at this time.
Alderman Cohen.
Thank you, Chairman. Hi, which chapter three fifty three is this?
This is in the midtown, three five three.
When was that passed?
Well, it was passed by the Planning Commission in September of twenty second, uh, twenty sixteen. So it would have been a few months after that.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm thinking of the right one. Is that, that's the one that, uh, is south of forty?
Yeah.
Okay, that has the, um, I think it borders Compton as well. Like, is on the eastern side?
Certainly, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, uh, Commissioner Banton.
Yes, a couple of questions. Um, the, the blinding study that was done says there's environmental, um, contamination on the site. Um, and I apologize if it's gone over in two thousand and sixteen, I wasn't yet on the commission then. Um, what, what type of, uh, remediation work needs to be done on the site?
Um, I don't have the specifics of that, but we may have the developer on the line. Rob Lachner, are you available?
Yes, Cecilia, I'm here. So, um, we do have, um, and I apologize, I, it's been a while since I've re- reviewed the, uh, environmental study, but we, we do have, um, contaminants on, uh, on the, uh, property. A lot of it has been previously cleaned up by previous landowners, including Cecilia. Uh, however, we are, in order to get a, uh, a, um, a residential, a restricted residential use, uh, covenant on the, uh, about a half of the property, we are putting in a, uh, a, a management plan in place with the DNR. So, um, I can share those details, uh, after, uh, this meeting. I, I really need to get my, my hands on that. They haven't been approved or anything like that. So, um, I apologize for not being more prepared in that particular topic, uh, Commissioner, but, uh, I can certainly follow up with the information for you.
Okay. I, I assume it's, uh, at a significant, significant cost to the developer, though, to do that.
Correct.
Yep. And then, uh, is the new infrastructure, uh, streets and sidewalks that will be going into this project, are those going to be public or privately maintained?
So a lot of the work that we're, I'm sorry, Cecilia, I, I just jumped in. I, it's something he was asking me, so, um, a lot of the, uh, work that we are doing is actually to existing public roadways. So Grand, Shoto, Spring, and Grashit will all see significant improvement. The, uh, internal street grid that, that doesn't exist today that we are re-establishing on the fourteen acres, uh, will meet city public standards. However, in discussions with, uh, the street department, uh, they would prefer those to remain under our maintenance, uh, program. Uh, so technically, uh, the development, uh, and it may end up being a public entity. I'm, I'm just not sure legally how that's all going to shake out, but, uh, uh, for example, we're going to have a community improvement district, uh, you know, established for the project. That very likely will own the roadways.
Um, Rich Bradley, this might be just a question for you. Why, why does the city want, want those to be privately owned streets?
So I'm not the street department, but my guess would be is because of, um, the fact of maintenance costs, the, uh, idea of staffing, or there could be configuration layout. I don't have all the details on it, but, um, many times it goes to a private developer for them to maintain the internal street grid. It's not an unusual thing.
Yeah. Okay, no further questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Bradley. Commissioner Boas.
No questions.
Commissioner Bradley.
No questions.
Commissioner Conway. You've come back. Commissioner Peoples.
No questions.
Commissioner Goodman.
No questions.
Commissioner Vine.
No questions.
Commissioner Young.
No question.
Uh, Commissioner Conway, any questions?
No question.
Okay, with that, all questions have been, uh, heard or answered at this point. Uh, we entertain a motion for the recognition.
Some move. Mr. Banton.
Second.
Second Vine.
It was moved by Commissioner Banton and seconded by Commissioner Vine's call for vote for approval.
Alderman Boyd.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Cohen.
No.
Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Conway.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman.
Aye.
Commissioner Vine.
Aye.
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Sheriff Stroud.
Aye.
And most impressive.
Very good. That is, that's fine.
Planning Commission members, some of you have been around to know that, uh, the planned unit development process is a multi-stage process in front of you folks. Uh, it's the zoning tool that's being used for this. You approved it last time, uh, or previous year, I think. It will go through the Board of Aldermen and be approved. In other words, you will see this project in more detail and then additional steps. So just to tell you that, uh, it will include some design review aspects. Because of that, I will also be sending a letter to LCRA, uh, because of this redevelopment plan, uh, that technically they have some design review aspects within it, uh, that I will expect them to coordinate with our design review process on the design. Just a quick one.
Okay, thank you, Don. Uh, the next item on our agenda, thirty six dash twenty. Cecilia, you're presenting that one also.
Yes, sir.
Okay, from you, go ahead.
This is also a project that you all have seen in the recent past. Uh, this is for a rezoning at fifteen oh one South Seventh Street. It's in the Soulard neighborhood. Could stay on that. No, I'm sorry. Uh, so the request is to rezone from J Industrial District to G Commercial and Office District. You may remember, uh, that this is a multi-mixed use development with, uh, multiple stories and the intent is to, uh, remove the existing structure that's there, which is currently a, an automobile use, uh, and has experienced a fire in the recent past. Um, so the Planning Commission reviewed and approved that chapter ninety nine, blinding, blinding study and redevelopment plan in February, just a couple of months ago. Um, the request now is to rezone and allow for those uses to actually be permitted. Um, you may also remember that we used the adjacency rule for this particular item for Strategic Land Use Plan. It is next to, um, quite a few residential, uh, residentially zoned and residentially used buildings. Um, and so that seems appropriate for this particular use and staff finds this to be in conformity with Strategic Land Use Plan using that rule. Next slide. So this is that floor plan that you all may be familiar with. Um, it is three five stories and, uh, will include a retail component as well as the multi-family development as well. For the second slide. Uh, the rezoning would achieve three objectives for the zoning administrator. It would bring new housing to set in that commercial to the neighborhood and surrounding area. It would also ensure the development is consistent with surrounding properties that are used and zoned for residential and commercial uses. And finally, it would bring the building of this parcel into conformity with its intended future uses. He and staff find it conformity with the sloop and recommend approval of the proposed rezoning. Do you have any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
All right, thank you, Cecilia. With that, uh, I'll entertain questions from the commission first. Uh, Alderman Boyd, any questions?
No questions.
Alderman Cohen, any questions?
No question.
Uh, Commissioner Banton, any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Boas, questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Bradley.
No question.
Commissioner Conway.
No question.
Commissioner Peoples.
No questions.
Commissioner Goodman.
No question.
Commissioner Vine.
No question.
Commissioner Young.
No question.
All questions being asked and answered at this point, uh, the recommendation of the commission is, of the, um, staff is to change the zoning on this. So I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
Commissioner Boas, a move to approve?
Second, Boyd.
It's been moved by Commissioner Boas, seconded by Commissioner Boyd, uh, to approve. Above please.
Previous role.
Objection, Jackson. I have a previous role.
Okay. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Cohen.
Aye.
Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Conway.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman.
Aye.
Commissioner Vine.
Aye.
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Sheriff Stroud.
Aye.
And most impressive.
Thank you very much. That's item number two. Uh, the third item is going to be presented by Roman. It is one fifty five dash four C and three. Uh, it's, it do, uh, the conversation that you'll bring forward, uh, once, Roman, are you ready?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. There you go.
Terrific. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Um, this is a fairly simple resolution. It basically is requesting the approval of the Planning Commission to conduct a, a presentation at a public hearing at a future Planning Commission meeting for Amendment number nineteen of the Strategic Land Use Plan, or the sloop as they call it. So this is a, a general update that typically, typically occurs once a year, um, with multiple sites that are located throughout the city. And the last update occurred, uh, in February of, of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, so there are basically two types of, of sloop amendments. The first one is a general update, uh, like Amendment Number nineteen, which is being proposed. And the second is a change in, in a vision for, uh, larger, underutilized sites. Uh, and this was done for, uh, the Cortex Innovation District, the new NGA facility, which is under construction on the near north side. And, um, another example is La Colina, the new residential subdivision that's currently being built, um, neighborhood. Could I get the next slide, please, Scott? The, uh, proposed sloop changes for Amendment Nine, Number nineteen will be based on, uh, three criteria, and, uh, some of you have, who've been on the commission remember this. Uh, they include the action items that were previously approved by the Planning Commission. So these typically include rezonings, redevelopment plans, neighborhood plans, things of that nature, uh, development projects that have been completed on those particular sites, as well as incremental development projects that have taken a longer time in order to implement. So again, this resolution is simply requesting the approval of the Planning Commission to conduct a presentation and a public hearing at a future Planning Commission meeting. That likely will occur at the July Planning Commission meeting, not, not June. Um, and the resolution also directs, uh, staff to fulfill the requirements for the public hearing. And that includes posting public notice ads in two publications, uh, the City Journal and the, uh, the St. Louis Daily Record. Uh, next slide, please. As you know, uh, the sloop serves as the land use component of the city's comprehensive plan, which was adopted back in nineteen forty seven. The, the sloop, though, was adopted in January of two thousand and five. So that covers a lot of time and territory, um, between those two time periods. Um, the sloop was based on a detailed analysis of the entire city. Uh, it was a lengthy process. It included looking at, uh, a variety of land use data and trends. Uh, some consulting assistance, uh, was part of the project. And there was input from both the Aldermen and, uh, neighborhood groups. Um, after Amendment Number nineteen is adopted and as a preview of, of coming attractions, the completion of the Equitable Economic Development Strategy, which is currently being prepared by SLDC, uh, will provide an opportunity to do a, a more thorough review of, of the sloop. Um, it'll be fifteen years since, uh, it was adopted back in January of two thousand and five. That comprehensive citywide review of the sloop will likely take place later this year. Um, but again, this resolution tonight is basically just, uh, dealing with Amendment Number nineteen. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
With that, uh, simply go, uh, quick, open the floor. Is there any commissioner with questions for Roman on the, on the presentation, well, future presentation for this? Okay, hearing no questions. Uh, I would entertain a motion to approve for the upcoming presentat- public, uh, presentation, public hearing on future planning meetings.
Move to approve, Jeffrey Boyd.
Second, Jake Banton.
It's been moved and approved by, moved by Jeffrey Boyd, seconded by Banton. Call for vote.
Previous role.
Call for previous role, hearing no objections. Previous role accepted.
Good, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'll just do one follow on to that. We, we do this annual update, uh, or the periodic update in practice to keep the plan and good legal standing. Uh, we've been through some court, we've been to court, we've survived being in court. We want to intend to, uh, to keep that up, so we do this routine thing. Uh, but as all, as Roman said, uh, next year, meaning after July one, because I'm going to knock on some of my, uh, in that, uh, there's a budget allocation that will allow us to have some consulting help to do a, a broader update based on, uh, changes in the community and their economic development actions. So that's pretty exciting. With that, uh, these are the only action items we had for each tonight. Uh, as you can see, there's a bunch of delegated items. I'm just going to call your attention to just one, uh, and that is, it's a single site, it's a single parcel in the Hill neighborhood that's in a redevelopment plan. You'll recognize the address as fifty six thirty three dash thirty seven Mechanical. It was the, uh, site that we most recently did a Preservation Board review, uh, and this is now the follow-up redevelopment plan. I will tell you during the, uh, thought process by others and, uh, the developer trying to move forward, uh, he knew we would want to seek tax abatement, which he has via the redevelopment plan. Uh, and there will not be any hard hitting language in this redevelopment plan that says, uh, the redevelopment plan calls for the demolition of this building. That is not in this redevelopment plan. Remember, your decision was to approve the demolition permit provided when, uh, there is a new construction permit for this site. Um, so that is a key continuum, uh, and that's a good thing. I'll just pause for a second to say in light of that, uh, I'm going to write a letter to the Aldermen and to LCRA, uh, upon tax abatement aspect of this. We usually rule on tax abatement, I'll sort of do it from a bully movement with the idea of what we talked about, uh, through the preservation, uh, review. Uh, that maybe they would amend the redevelopment plans and offer up fifteen years of tax abatement. If in this marketplace and the numbers of how to develop property, it gets readout and the, or current language in the board bill, uh, ten percent, or ten years of tax abatement, uh, would be standing if it goes to new construction. So just give a little sweet note for, uh, motivation. Just some thoughts in that regard. And, um, we're, uh, we're excited to be here. There was a few of us here. Um, the volume of some things that come in, uh, are historic reviews, are, are forced down, but that are not, uh, they're, they're above, uh, quicker than the traffic that were passed a couple of weeks to a year ago. Uh, they still include things that are complicated, themselves things that are simple. Uh, so we're glad to see that things are still cooking along. With that, that's all the action that we need from you tonight. With one exception, your homework assignment. Ahah. So I'm going to pass the homework assignment back to Cecilia that is going to be agreed up to.
Hi, everyone. Uh, we do have one item that's a little bit unusual to see in a Planning Commission package, and it's an informational item. Um, I hope you all have some time to take a look at this, but if you haven't, um, we put this on here to sort of put it on your radar and in hopes that, you know, if you have questions now, we can talk about it. And if you have questions later, we will put it on the Planning Commission agenda for, uh, discussion and action. Um, so this is not an end all to be all, but we have, uh, taken a look at, uh, a set of rules that you all may be familiar with. If any of you, uh, many of you have been on the Planning Commission when we've actually gone through an adoption of a neighborhood plan. There are a series of minimum requirements that we currently have. Those were adopted in October of two thousand. And they are very basic requirements related predominantly to data and information that this, that the plan needs to have. Of course, since two thousand, the planning profession has, uh, sort of evolved a lot and, um, the best practices is, has changed in regards to, um, how much community engagement there should be and, um, how reflective the neighborhood plan should be of the community and their priorities and desires. So, um, we have done a lot of research on, uh, the best practices nationwide, uh, what other cities are doing, both peer cities as well as those cities that probably, you know, in, in a lot of other people's eyes have passed us in, in their, uh, in their progressive ways. Um, but we have looked at everything so that we can get an idea of what neighborhood planning looks like today. And we've taken tho- those investigative research and started conversations with people in the community, people from CDCs, from neighborhood associations, um, community organizations like SLACO and BASTFPL, um, and, and the list goes on. But the, the idea being that we would bring those, uh, research points to them with a discussion around, this is what other cities are doing, but what do we need to make sure that we, uh, consider? So that we are tailoring the strategy of how neighborhood planning should be addressing St. Louis specifically. You understand that St. Louis has some benefits, some challenges, some priorities that we really need to, uh, make sure are considered. So, um, we've, we've tailored, um, the neighborhood planning requirements to ensure that those are considered. So for instance, um, not a lot of cities across the nation across the country are really building into what equity and planning means. Um, but we want to make sure that it's at the forefront of what we're doing and what, uh, neighborhood plans include in St. Louis. And the same thing with, uh, topics like safety. So, um, with that, the minimums of middle requirements are, we're hoping to repeal and replace these existing ones with these. Um, so the basic premise is that we have some basic guidelines for, uh, neighborhood planning entities to- to consider that they should be looking at neighborhood boundaries as opposed to, um, arbitrary boundaries or boundaries established by a city or a particular organization or, um, you know, boundaries that might be more in flux. So, um, neighborhood boundaries are intended to be stable and static, and so this would allow us to ensure that we cover the entire city and allocate resources to those areas that need it most. Um, and then also how it might, uh, deal with, um, sort of a divide or if a neighborhood boundary, um, comes up against an important floor door. So, it provides some guidelines there. It also provides guidelines for community engagement. It's sort of intended to be a menu of options where they can, um, do a bare minimum and then they can also choose based on, um, the needs of the community. They can tailor the community engagement strategy to the population. For instance, if they are an older population and they need to some of the ground, um, they can do that. Uh, the next item is the top coverage, so this is kind of what I was talking about, about which topics need to be covered in neighborhood plans. Again, there's sort of a minimum requirement, they have to address a certain one, and then secondary and specific area topics can be based on the community's needs. And then finally, the local and regional implementation is an effort to ensure that those plans and strategies that come out on a regular basis are, um, being considered and being, uh, you know, reviewed in detail and that they are coordinated. Um, so that if there are things that the local community wants to implement differently, those conversations are being had and, uh, you know, when the neighborhood plans are adopted, they can be easily implemented. So, um, that's a brief overview. If anyone has questions at this point, I would be happy to answer them. Um, but alternatively, we'll have another platform to do that, so I'll leave that to you.
This is-
Hold on. I'm sorry, go ahead and somebody had a question.
Yeah, this is Jeffrey Boyd. Um, I, I like this, I think it's, um, very well thought out. Uh, my question is, uh, for a community like mine who were, I should say whereby, community engagement is very difficult because most people feel intimidated about being part of a process like this, and they typically need a leader to really lead them. And in some cases, you may have an alderman that has the capacity to do that, and in some cases, maybe not. Um, who, who's gonna, who would be the organizer in your mind? Would it be an outside consultant? Would it be the planning commission? I mean, who would start this community engagement process?
Excellent question, and important. So, um, Jeffrey, I'll just do two things for you. Uh, one is, uh, neighborhood plans, the minimum requirements, we have an adopted set that's shorter and, uh, old and maybe outdated to best practice. Uh, this is what we're gonna discuss. Over the course of the next month, we'll send two things to you that I could put those white papers although they have sexy covers, uh, about best practices, uh, practices that we've done in the city in the past and best practices around the country. Uh, to fuel your knowledge about all this. Why I bring that up is particularly to answer your, your question. Those examples around the country, how to reach and do, uh, community engagement in new and modern ways in places that have, have, uh, fatigue and, and being engaged, have disbelieved and being engaged are all part of, of what we're trying to be able to walk through. One of the things, uh, that's in discussion is how to make sure that a neighborhood is ready to have a planning process. And that goes really to your, uh, point. And we've been working with the Central West Community Foundation on that. We have some other money that we might use to help for a neighborhood to get organized, uh, to be ready to, uh, provide engagement for a, for a neighborhood plan. It's a real honest, uh, effort that we don't want to helicopter something in. We've gotta figure out how to best hear from the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
With that, if you have other, other questions, you can, I would suggest you email them to Michelle. She'll be sure the appropriate person or persons gets them, uh, gets your answers either prior to the next meeting or, uh, during the next meeting, we can get those included in this. Uh, prior to any, uh, closure, I simply wanna remind you, if you are in need of masks or needing a, um, test of, I'm sorry? Uh, St. Louis, S T Styles, I think they have masks or available. Uh, not a commercial, but a, a public service announcement, uh, randy. So, if you wanna tell them, you know, they're available?
Well, actually, they're, they're available and they're not. Um, the first batch of the St. Louis flag mask, um, sold out in less than twenty-four hours, which is a good problem to have, I guess. But, uh, there's a, a back order right now in production, um, a huge batch coming in in about three weeks. So, if you wanna order online, that's the best way to get the queue, but they're hot commodities right now. So, um, and if you haven't seen them, they're, um, our award-winning St. Louis flag just, uh, you know, on a, on a mask. So, it's really cool.
Not a pub- not a commercial, but a public service announcement, I wanna say.
Big throw.
With that, any other, uh, points of interest from commissioners?
Yes.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for closing.
So, ma'am.
Just moving second, the meeting adjourned again.